Okay, let's go ahead and get this called to order. Public Works Committee meeting today, December 2 at 5:22 PM. Committee present, myself, Eric Marshall, and Mike Klein. We also have in attendance Robin Trader and Jennifer Wilson, consultant. Today's topic, we're going to talk about the ordinance that was resolution that was proposed, ordinance, ordinance that was proposed regarding the review of the water rates that we had first reading last meeting. Any initial questions that we want to ask while everybody's getting caught up? Or do we want to wait and see the presentation again, pieces of it?
You're cool.
Okay.
Could I just add, just for the record, this is in particular, general ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty five, amending monthly water user rates. So just for the record.
Thank you. That was what I was looking for.
Ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty five.
Robin, would you want to address just kind of a quick overview of of the ordinance again and the percentages we're talking about?
Yes, that's not a problem. I'll share whatever you want me to, but the brief summary is that we're looking at the need for an increase of forty four point two four percent above the already approved twenty twenty six rate. And the twenty twenty six rate will go into effect January one, twenty twenty six. That is phase three from the rate increase that was approved in twenty twenty three.
And then it's already approved for phases four and five to go in effect January first to twenty seven and twenty eight.
That's correct, yeah. And the increase, if we accelerated both of those, we, that would give us fifteen point four one percent. And we'll need an additional twenty four point nine eight. So that's where that forty four point two four is coming from.
Okay. So if we do nothing, those five phases go through regardless?
That's true. However, there is a little caveat to that, that we had instructions from the twenty twenty three proposal and accepted rate case that we should acquire another bond before the end of twenty twenty five or face the potential of having rates reduced further. The problem with that is that we can't afford that debt service as it, as it is, let alone with an increase of the debt service. That's, that's why we need to request this now.
And that's in agreement with the I U R C?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. What, what is the bond amount that you guys are expected to take? Just push the red button.
Yeah, so what happened is that you guys got very favorable rates at your last bond issue and did most of the projects or put most of the projects within that bond issue. And so you actually had a little bit of extra capacity, but we weren't able to secure a loan here in twenty twenty five. So our debt service, I think, is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what we agreed to. And when we went into settlement with the I, Office of the Utilities Consumer Counselor, they said, well, this one line item, you will true it up after you issue debt. And if you don't do the debt, then you basically have to lower your rates. Unfortunately, your other operating expenses have increased during that time. So that's what the caveat is. The problem is, is that you're expected to lower your rates at this point because you got such good terms during your last bond issuance, but your operating, other operating expenses have gone up two million dollars, but we can't offset it against that.
Okay. So if we do this review, we would not have to do the bond issue potentially if they see that those operating expenses have changed?
Correct. What we're basically trying to do is. Oh, I don't have to hold. Okay, there we go, sorry. Yes, we're basically resetting it by putting in a petition by the end of the year. We're basically telling them, hey, we do need a rate increase that will add additional revenues of one point six million dollars. And so please don't reduce down our rates because we're already in front of you asking for one point six. If you reduce our rates, we're going to be asking you for one, one million eight fifty or something higher. So we're just going to be offsetting whatever they would ask us to reduce it down, but it would put us into a further hole during the year until we get those rates in place.
Okay. But with this, was your thought we were going to want to do, you guys were going to want to do a bond issue as well?
Well, I, we have a whole, that wasn't specifically the goal here, though there is a long list of capital improvement projects that we, we would like to get to. And part of this would be to, you know, the, the agreement that we made in twenty twenty three, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but they had required us to set money aside to grow our capital improvement funds. And the rate that we have in place has not been sufficient to let us build those funds. And so that just continues to put us further and further behind on the capital improvement issues that we have. So that's one of the reasons why we need the rate increase also is to be able to set aside that money year over year so that we can plan for these larger projects that we really need to complete.
Can you clarify who "they" is? They told us to set aside money. Who's that?
I U R C. Yes, so you go through a process to raise your rates. You come here first and have the city council vote on it. And then you're under the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission jurisdiction. So then you make a petition to the I U R C for a rate case to be placed in front of them. And so then it starts a process where we then file testimony, pre-written testimony. And then the Office of the Utility Consumer Counselor will review our work. And they're basically working the other side of, of, of trying to keep the rates as low as possible. We come to an agreement with them, we hope, and then we present our settlement to the I U R C. If our, I don't expect our case to be fully litigated, but there's the possibility it could be fully litigated. And that's when we would go in front of the judges at the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission and fully litigate the case. I, I hope that does not happen. It did not happen in the last rate case, that we were able to reach settlement with the Office of the Utility Consumer Counselor, present a proposal to the I R C. And then the I R C accepted that proposal, that settlement, and the rates were put into place in October of twenty twenty three.
Can you remind us when phase one and two rate increases were put in and what those amounts were?
It was October of twenty twenty three. Sorry, I don't remember the exact percentages. It was a full forty five percent over a five-year time period. And then the second rate increase went into effect January first of twenty twenty five. And you'll have another rate increase go into effect here, January twenty twenty six. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have the, the actual across-the-board rate increases on those. But yeah, so you've already gone into that forty five percent. I would say maybe probably about thirty percent of that forty five percent is, is being implemented by January first, twenty twenty six.
I hope, I presume this is a dress rehearsal for what you're going to tell the public when they come in at the next meeting, right?
Correct.
So that they can hear all of this. That's in the presentation?
Yes, I have a full presentation from the, that I can go through in the last meeting, whatever you guys want.
We're not the only ones to hear that, okay.
True.
I will let you know, Councilman Klein, it is being streamed and recorded as well. So this is public record.
Yeah, and we, and we did share all of this two weeks ago as, as well.
Other initial questions? Did we get the presentations to stream?
I see.
Okay. Okay, so while he's doing that, to summarize what information, to make sure we're all on the same page. This process was done, I assume, in late twenty twenty one, to get an agreement for twenty twenty three or in twenty twenty two for twenty twenty three?
It, it was done in twenty twenty two, and we filed the case in January of twenty three. And then you had rates in place, an agreement by August, and the rates were in place by October.
Okay, so this was done twenty twenty two. First phase in October, second one just this year. And then the next one for January one coming up in less than a month. And then, so what we're hoping to do is rather than do the next two years of increases and then look at it as to accelerate to get that additional amount in, in twenty seven, I assume, and then have the new rates.
Yeah, we would.
Have the next set of phases from there.
Yeah, we would hope whenever the, whenever we get an order from the commission, which we would hope by October. If it follows the same timeline, we would have our case filed here in December, and we would hopefully have rates in place by August of twenty twenty six. And then we would accelerate those twenty seven, twenty eight, and also have that additional twenty five percent on top of that implemented at that point in time in one phase.
Okay. So even though you're saying you're requesting a forty four percent, fifteen of that is already phases four and five. And so it's really only another twenty five percent versus the forty five percent that was approved in twenty three.
Correct.
So you're talking forty five and then an additional twenty five percent?
Correct.
Okay.
Is it twenty five or twenty nine? What's the?
It's twenty four point nine eight, so I rounded it to twenty five.
I wasn't sure how much the point zero two equated into pennies, so.
So I heard forty four and then fifteen, and then I'm cracking in my head, so I'm not sure where I'm at.
Okay.
Well, and, and keep in mind too that this is our request, not necessarily what they will approve, but they're not going to go over that amount. So it's, it's almost like a not to exceed kind of request.
Do you want me to move forward? Tell me which way, which way you want to go?
Yep. All right, so this page just really tells you how I went about going, preparing the report. We looked at a test year ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty five and compared the years twenty four, year end twenty four and twenty three. And we looked at your balance sheet, income statement, and your statement of fund balances and debt service. We made adjustments for fixed known and net measurable items as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And then we come up with your operation and maintenance, your debt service, your debt service reserve funding, adding to the operating fund reserve buildup, repaying the loan to sewer, and then have cash available for ongoing capital expenses. Next slide. We've been talking about this. There's two components of the rate increase. We're moving forward. The two phases that are already in, that are due to come into effect on the January first twenty seven and January first twenty eight, and also requesting an additional approximately twenty five percent on top of that. This really shows the, what Robin was talking about. Your blue item over these test year, twenty three is the one on the left, twenty four is in the middle, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty five is on the right. The blue line is your revenue, and the yellow line is your debt service and operating expenses. So you can see our expenses of debt service and operating expenses have been exceeding our revenue each of those years. And so we have not been able to do any capital expen, uh, funding out of revenues that are coming in on an annual basis. So we're basically been depleting all of our cash funds. And so that's what happens, that differential, you're reducing down your operating fund. And that is why you needed to request a loan from the sewage works.
Can I ask a question while this freshens my mind in looking at this? But why the one point eight million dollar loan? Help me understand the one point eight when really it's a two hundred thousand dollar difference, four hundred thousand. That was an eight hundred back in twenty twenty three, but how long was the one point eight million supposed to kind of hold you at bay until you got something approved?
Right, the one point eight million went into effect earlier this year, and you're not expected to. The, the process, as I explained it, is a rather lengthy process. And so we're not expected to have rates in place, at least till September or October of next year. So you need to have those funds in order to, the water utility to operate and make payments and do everything between now and then when we get the order.
Yeah, I, I get that. I'm just understanding the, why the one point eight. It seems like a large amount when we're really only a couple hundred thousand off between revenue and operating expense. Just trying to understand, that's all.
So just a quick anecdotal story that might help illustrate this. If you guys recall, I think it was the fall of twenty twenty three, the Kim Road incident, where we had six unmentionable events. I can't even say that in a public meeting, sorry. It's a little superstitious, but we had six such events within about a thirty-hour period. And the bill for that, or at least what was easily accounted for, there are other expenses on top of this which are less, or that are more complicated to come by, but it was upwards of three hundred thousand dollars. So in other words, if there's not at least a little bit in the bank there, if we've got any kind of catastrophic event whatsoever, we are, we are in a serious, serious pickle.
All right, that, that helps answer the question. So if there's any money left of the one point eight, that will automatically go back to the wastewater, correct?
Correct. And also, that loan is also supposed to be paid back over a four-year time period according to how we set it up in our case to the I U R C. You, you can divert funds to pay it back faster, but we have set it up for being to four-year. We're expecting at least the balance, you're going to pull down at least one point two million of that one point eight is our estimate before new rates are put into place.
Great, thank you.
All right. So what we do, the, the item on the left is your test year, and the blue is your operating expenses, and the yellow is your taxes other than income taxes. And we make adjustments of things that we know are coming up in twenty twenty six. We made about eight hundred and thirty-two thousand of adjustments. And that includes adding two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a payment in lieu of taxes that would be paid to the city. There's increases in salaries and wages, bad debts, contractual expenses, rate cases, a rate case expense, and purchase power and insurance rounds out the rest of the items that are increasing, are expected to increase in twenty twenty six. This page shows the difference between the test year and the previous filing and what it is now. So the one on the right is what was approved, and that was using a test year of March thirty first of twenty twenty two. And we are allowed just a little bit under four million dollars for operating expenses and taxes other than income taxes. What we're asking for in this case is an amount of six million fifty thousand dollars. So there has been a two million dollar increase in expenses, operating expenses and taxes other than income taxes from the prior case to where we are now.
Question on that?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what I'm hearing. So and maybe, or maybe I need you to explain that a little bit differently. Yeah, can you just explain, like, are you saying that it was estimated to have about four million, but it ended up being about six million?
Correct. It was in March of twenty twenty two, we estimated that our operating expenses would be about four million dollars. There's been a lot of inflation that's happened since March thirty first of twenty twenty two, and thus our operating expenses have increased by two million dollars since that time period.
This is a, this is where, there's a sticking point for me on this. I don't understand how you're off two million dollars. That's fifty percent of your budget. So how, how are we off two million dollars within two years? Inflation wasn't that rampant, was it?
Well, so for example, the cost of chlorine, we buy those in ton cylinders. And when we were looking at the first rate increase, the price tag was around four hundred dollars per cylinder. And now it's like two thousand dollars or just over two thousand dollars a cylinder. So that's, that's the kind of, you know, five-fold increase, the four-fold, five-fold increase that we're talking about over some of our supplies. Those inflation rates, those back-to-back years of inflation rates wreaked havoc with our supply chain and some of our other suppliers. The other thing is, one of our largest expenses in the water department is lime for the lime softening. And I know that that's been a major bonus for the entire community in keeping the water to a, a level of quality that is appreciated and, you know, doesn't require every citizen to have a water softener in their home. But that's nearly a million dollars a year based on this year's chemical bids. And so that's a, that's significant just by itself, and you see those increases in that. That's pretty huge.
It also is part of the process of what we do in taking the case at the I U R C, where we can only project out expenses for one year. So it does kind of make you come back on a regular basis unless you have an expense that's falling off. So previously, you were able to waylay a large increase or an increase. You didn't have one from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty one or two thousand and twenty two because at that time you had debt service and it rolled off. And so then as your operating expenses increased and your debt service decreased, you were able to still maintain and be able to run the utility. When this case was settled, we didn't have any of that leeway. They were very stringent on how we were doing the debt service. As I explained, we can't take advantage that you guys got a, a lower interest rate and a better deal on the, the bonds. We can't offset that with the increases with the operating expenses because of the deal that was made with this, in settlement to get your rates in place last time.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm, I'm kind of along the same line as, as Nick on the two million dollar increase on operating expenses. You also, Jennifer, said that you were compensating for increase on salaries and wages. Have you recommended any cuts in their budget to, or identified any place where you can cut or freeze wages? Or, I mean, I understand the cost of living, but other than that, I, I see that we keep raising rates and raising rates. And we, we had a plan of fifteen, fifteen percent, and now we're, we're adding an additional twenty five percent. But that initial plan at fifteen point four one, I understand it's a projection, but it's pretty far off as far as a projection. I'm not saying it was your company, Crowe, but ever since I've been on the city council since twenty twenty, the water department and solid waste and sewage department has taken out of their cash reserves to balance their budget. The first year that I came on, when I get a budget from the water department, they're taking six hundred thousand dollars out of their cash reserves to balance their budget, which I understand the process of that in creating a budget if you've got cash reserves. But if your, your income is not enough to exceed your expenses at some point in time, I would expect you're going to have to cut back or identify someplace to where you can cut expenses because the volume is not going to increase anytime soon that I see. Most, most of it's decreasing if I look at the volume charts correctly on what we're selling as far as water and sewage and solid waste on customers. So have you identified any of that as far as cutting costs and freezing wages? Because we had to deal with the same thing with Senate Bill One. We couldn't give any raises. We couldn't even give the cost of living because we understood that our budget was what we had, and we didn't want to take out of cash reserves in case something catastrophic happened. So I would entertain any information along those lines that you could share with us to justify almost twofold increasing from fifteen percent to forty four percent. To justify that, I understand the projections and the usage and your operating expenses, but it is quite a bit. I mean, you know, on, on, if it was under projected, then there's a problem with the accounting. So I'm just kind of curious, since twenty twenty, when I came on, they've always pulled out of their, their general fund to balance the budget. So could you enlighten me on anything on that?
Well, I guess I. I can, I can add a little bit, and then Jennifer can probably add some more. In two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, we did a capital improvement project to replace and upgrade our filters at the water plant on site there. That project was not paid for with a bond, but was paid for with cash. And from that time or shortly thereafter, we began depleting. And from that time or shortly thereafter, we began depleting our cash reserves. When I became Assistant Director in 2015, I noticed that there was a deficit. On a monthly basis, it was a five-digit number. And since that time, it has steadily increased such that at this point in time, our cash reserves have effectively been depleted entirely. With regard to reducing our staff, I suppose in theory that is an option. But I will say that we've found it to be more cost prohibitive to hire out the things that we need to do rather than to employ the folks, the workforce that we need for the repairs and whatnot. It's much more expensive for us to contract things, you know. And one of those examples is the Kim Road experience that we had. Because it was 30 solid hours back-to-back-to-back, we were forced to contract part of that out simply because of safety reasons. We couldn't have our guys out there for 30 solid hours using cutting tools and digging equipment. And so that was one of the reasons that that drove that cost up. Had those been spread out over a period of days or a couple of weeks, our crews would have been able to manage that for a much smaller dollar amount. And so those are a couple of things that have been contributing factors to that.
What I was going to point out is on the next slide, it does give you a breakdown of what your operating expenses break down into, where your employee costs are 47%. The next largest thing is contractual service at 16. Chemicals are 12%. And then you can see the rest of them, materials and supply at 8%. Purchase power at 6% of the entire budget.
One moment. So chemicals, 12. That'd be the chlorine and lime, correct?
Correct.
Well, I guess seeing that at 12%, it probably makes me ask more questions. So 6 million, 12%, that's $720,000 out of that for chemicals. But we're needing to increase it 2 million. So the total chemical budget is 720,000, not the increase, but we're off 2 million. So where do, where, is it on another slide? Where in the 2 million? Is there a breakdown of percentage increase for each of these categories? So where is this $2 million going in this pie?
Right, of that $2 million, I don't have a pie to show you on there, but I did summarize it about between the four prior test year back in 2022. So in four years, salaries and wages and benefits accounts for 740,000. Contractual services is about 300,000. Materials and supply is 200. The pilot is 265. Insurance, 140. Chemicals went up 127. Bad debt is 128, and the rate case expenses is 70. That generally is the differential between what was happening in your prior test year and what's happening in the projected test year.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand where the 2 million, though, like, where... I'm sure it's all spread around that pie a little bit, but where is the most significant cost increase from the 400 to the 6 million that's causing this rate request?
Yes, so it's those items that I talked about, salaries and wages is 7... Yeah, that's $740,000 between the prior test year and the current test year. $740,000 increase in salaries and wages, 300,000.
Wait, wait, hold on a second. So you're telling me 740,000 more for salaries on top of what we were paying from the test year to now?
From March of 2022 to what's projected next year.
How would he go up $740,000 in three years in wages?
Well, that's actually, it's four years, four years.
Four years, whatever, but help me understand this. That's the increase or the total expenditure for salaries?
That's the increase between those two test years.
So is this rate increase to pay for chemicals or salary?
Chemicals went up $127,000 between those two test years.
But what I'm being told is that this has been driven a lot by chemicals. But I'm just not, it sounds more like employee costs.
The employee costs also include things like the benefits such as health insurance. And I know the quotes that we got this year for next year's budget, they originally shot us 30% increase. It turned out that we got that closer to 20, and that's an average because we offer two different pans. And so it's not just a wage situation, it's the whole package deal that that's inclusive of.
Could you tell me what your total expense is for employee wages and all the associated insurance just for water? So you said 740,000 increase, but what's the total out of the 6 million?
I...
I'll say 2025 this calendar year.
I think...
Or last year.
I wrote some notes down. I think it's $2,260,000, the salaries and wages. But don't quote me exactly on that. That might not include some of the FICA and employee benefits. But basically, $2,250,000 is salaries and wages.
That's prior to the 740,000 increase that you're requesting?
I believe so, yeah.
So we're going to go to, to about 3 million in salaries and wages with this increase, correct?
Correct. That does, yes, that does appear to... Which follows along with the idea that approximately 50% of your budget there is salaries and wages and benefits.
Sorry to take time. Could you, would you be able to email all of us that those, that numbers you gave with the dollar amount for each category increase?
Yes.
Get that to us? That'd be great, thank you.
And is that on, are you doing each department separately?
I'm just asking for water right now because that's what they're requesting.
Okay.
But...
But they're going to come back to us for wastewater and solid waste.
Well, I mean, if you want to ask that, yeah.
That's in the projection this fall, correct?
Potentially, yes. Those, the plans for the wastewater scenario are still up in the air. We, that's too soon to have the numbers ready for those projections. I mean, we have everything for the 2026 budgets, and we, I mean, we're happy to share those. We should be passing those on Thursday at our board meeting.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't asking where you could cut jobs. I was just more curious on identifying cutting expenses or freezing wages and salaries like we had to do instead of increasing it $740,000. I mean, I would love to do that if we could increase our property taxes, we could give raises, but we couldn't even give public safety any raises. So that's where I was at. And Jennifer, I was also, I didn't know if you were thinking about it or you could get that information to me on, is there anywhere in the budget where we could cut expenses to alleviate some of the rate increase onto the taxpayers as far as the water bill? I mean, it was hard enough to swallow the 15% that we implemented over the five-stage plan. And I caused a lot of slack over that from taxpayers and constituents. And now we're going to raise it another 25% or accelerate it. And it seems like to me not only chemicals on a small scale of 12%, but it's majority of increase in wages. Am I correct on that, or can you correct me if I'm wrong on that, or?
Well, I guess the differential there of, as we talked about from the prior test year of year-end, close to year-end 2021 to what we project over a six-year time period, the wages have gone up $742,000. That is, that is an accurate statement. Of that 2 million differential, 700,000 is of that 2 million dollars.
Is that based on the cost of, just the cost of living increase?
Yes.
Of what, 2.8%, 2.8%, 2.4%? What?
The board had agreed several years ago that they would go with the national cost of living increase. And so like for this year, the 2.8 was the recommendation for the 2026 budgets.
How many employees do you have?
Just water?
No, everybody, because I'm...
I believe it's 87. Some of those are part-time.
And water, could you tell me water?
Yes, I can. In this moment, I don't have that number off the top of my head. And some of the employees are divided. For example, as the utility director, I am divided by four utilities, not equally. I think I explained during the last council meeting that our process, when someone crisscrosses multiple utilities, is to do a percentage basis, looking at the revenues. And so the lion's share of those expenses would come from wastewater first, then from drinking water, and then the other two utilities are smaller percentages of revenue there.
Mike, you still have a question?
I got a que, and it's not necessarily, we're talking about increases and we're talking about the things costing more. So if we have down the road a water guzzling project that's going to cost more in chemicals and this and that, is this going to protect us from coming back and say, hey, that was then, this is now? Is this going to protect us in any way?
What we're looking at right now is independent completely of any economic projections or anything like that in the future. The bottom line, as we've kind of pointed out through the discussion already, is we kicked the can for a long time. I wasn't the director for this duration of this time, but I will expect, accept complete responsibility as the utility director now that from 2005 to 2023, we should have been having more of these conversations. That that should have been something we revisited more often because in depleting our reserves, we chose not to complete any additional capital improvement projects. And now as we look at the system, it has continued to age. It has continued to have the same wear and tear on it, but is needing more attention in certain areas. So even if the status quo was maintained, this is something that we need that we feel like could get us to a point of making us whole. But as prices continue to go up and the economy continues to change, it's something that we'll need to look at on a regular basis. And I think I had shared with you guys that a three-year period is probably a wise thing. And now that's not to say that we would always be asking for an increase, but it would be presenting the facts of the situation and an analysis of that so that we know exactly where we stand rather than waiting for that long period of time. And if there were to be an economic situation in the future that dramatically changed and increased our water revenue, there again, if we're looking at this on a three-year rotation, we'd be able to say, okay, we don't need a rate increase or maybe we need to adjust it downward, which would be a little bit unusual. But, you know, depending on what the circumstances were, that could be possible as well.
Can we, Nick, would you roll back a couple of slides? Nope, too far. The next one there, yeah. So when it says approved, what year is that, that that was approved at the 4 million?
Correct, that was using, that was using a March 31st, 2022.
Okay.
Adjusted only for one year's worth of expenses. So it was adjusted to March 2023, but your rates then weren't put into effect till October of 2023.
Okay. And then the adjusted one showing the 6 million, is that what the current budget amount is being approved for 2026?
It probably is close, yes. I mean, we started this process a little bit ago, using the test year June 30th, and I know they're just finishing up their budget now. But that was the plan, is to try to look forward for a year of things that we could adjust that we know are coming.
What have local manufacturers had to say about this?
What do you, what specifically do you mean?
I don't know. I mean, I mean, we got manufacturing here that uses lots of water and is going to hit them, so I'm...
So our industrial customers, we haven't really heard anything from industrial customers about this. As a matter of fact, just keeping an eye on social media from two weeks ago when this was presented publicly, we've had fairly small amount of commentary at all.
So I guess where I was going was this $2 million increase is over a four-year period of time is what we're looking at. So it's a 50% increase over a four-year budget cycle?
Correct, yes.
What are you guys going to do if this doesn't pass?
That's a good question. Honestly, we're in a pretty dire situation right now. To cut people would be to cut further our resources and require additional contracting. And I'm not sure that that's going to offset equally there. We would have to begin exploring other options. Potentially looking at no longer lime softening, that could be an option. I have not done any research to this point on what it would do to our operating costs. There's not a whole lot more that we could do to the treatment process itself. You know, there have been some communities that have sold to private companies. When that happens, there's an immediate rate increase that's much more significant than what we're talking about here. Other than that, I would have to go back to the drawing board and get really creative.
Can I ask a question back on the salaries? You said 2.26 million in salaries and wages. That's including benefits. Was that, was that 2024 or 2025?
That was the test year ending June 30th, 2025.
So that's what we're projected, that's what you're projected to pay in salaries and wages this year is 2.26 million?
That, well, that was what was paid between July 1st, 2024, and June 30th of 2025. And then we have an additional 740,000 on top of that that we're projecting to include the increase for the rest of 2025 increases and for the 2026 increases.
So it's July to July, so July 2024 to July 2025 is 2.2 million. And you're saying July 2025 to July 2026 is 3 million in salaries and wages? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's really close. You got the first part right, but the 3 million is really what we're projecting forward for the full year of January to December of 2026.
But we're really, either way, it's a 12-month rolling period I'm talking about. So I get what you're saying, but year to year, 365 days, even with a couple of month gap there, we're going from 2.2 to 3 million in salaries and wages.
It's a year and a half, really. I mean, because, yeah, so we, you had a rate increase January 1st, 2025, so we had to project out the last six months. So we get us to January of 2026, and then we get to show the rate increase for 2026 as well. So our test year is goes through July 1st of 2025, and then we get to project out what the full year of 2026 is going to be.
But your test year is still a year, correct? 365 days?
It is still a year.
So your test year, which is based on actual data, correct?
Correct.
Money spent versus what you're projecting, the full calendar year next year, it's going from 2.26 million to 3 million?
That is correct.
Correct?
Yeah, but I guess I just want to make sure that you don't discount that you had a 2025 rate increase as well. So it's not just saying one year to the next, you're actually increase, it's...
Well, I'm not asking about rate increases, I'm talking about what we're spending on salaries and wages.
Okay, yes, then you are correct.
Expenditures for salaries and wages, that's it. Because I'm really trying to understand where all this money's going to go and what's the main purpose of it. I was under the assumption that this was mostly chemicals. I was under the assumption that this was mostly chemicals and, and all that. And cost of living with a two point two six million dollar budget for two point eight percent is about sixty-three thousand dollar increase year over year. But you're saying we need seven hundred and forty thousand. So either we need to change health insurance carriers over there, or these numbers don't make sense.
We've gone shopping each year for the health insurance scenarios. I would be wide open to more affordable suggestions. We, we took the option that, that we, that was the most affordable one.
Did the, so I guess the question would be, out of the seven hundred and forty, it would be lovely to know the breakdown of, out of that, how much of that is going to salaries and wages versus health insurance or miscellaneous benefits? That would help us understand a lot, because it's just, the, the COLA increases, doesn't, the math doesn't math.
Yeah, we can, we can get that.
Just my opinion. These kind of increases, this would put any business out of, it, it, it'd put you out of business. Anybody. Nick, your salary increases for your staff, that would put you out of business. Put me out of business, where I work. I, I think the wages are out of control, in my opinion. I don't, I don't know.
We participate pretty regularly in a wage comparison study with other utility companies across the state of Indiana. We've always tried to shoot for somewhat of that middle position, and that's, that's pretty close to where we are. There's probably a, a study out there right now. AWWA puts out the water study for that. We could take a look and share that information if you'd be interested in seeing it.
If you just get the breakdown of the seven forty, that'd be great for me.
And the health insurance, insurance aside, I mean, that can be a discussion as well, but I don't know. I know purchasing power with less people for health insurance is, always makes it higher. And so that may be something that we should discuss down the road too. If not, being able to maybe combine the groups to benefit both the city and the utility as far as health insurance goes, might be an option too. And I'm, that's off the cuff without any research or anything standing behind that, but adding our numbers to almost another hundred people, that would only help us as well as a city as far as being able to get better rates. That may be something that we need to research as a, as a council too. So I'm looking at the drafted report, rate report, that looks like it came from Crowe. And it's talking about the statement of incomes, but it's adds in what the salary and wages and benefits are. What I'm looking at, even with benefits, is about a million and a half dollars for a year in the water area. So that's where I think I'm with Nick, that I'm not sure the math is coming up right, that I would, I'd question maybe that, that increase is not correct or has got some bad projections in it, as far as what salary goes. Or at least I hope so, but considering that you probably didn't do more than COLA over the last few years, COLA has been very, very low. I don't doubt that expenses have gone up quite a bit. We've all seen that. We all know what that has done as far as fuel goes, as far as chemicals and things of that nature. And then we talked a little bit, I know you mentioned the pilot, has that been paid every year for the last three years? Or is that something that's newly being put into the budget?
That's something new for the budget for this year.
Okay.
Was, was that pilot recommendation from anybody, or did you just put it in there for?
Yeah, so the pilot, um, how it was calculated was taking the total water utility plant assets and multiplying it by the corporate tax rate. That's the normal I U R C way of, accepted way of how the pilot is calculated.
Because we haven't received that. I don't think we've received it since I've been a councilman since twenty twenty.
Yeah, no.
Why all of a sudden are you putting in a pilot for us?
My thought was with the Senate Bill One difficulties and knowing that the city was struggling with some of the things there, that perhaps we could come to a, a place where we could help one another out a little bit. And this is something that we could in play, put in place. You know, as we do discuss other rate increases going forward, that could be a discussion for wastewater and stormwater as well, if it needed to be, as, as we come to those.
I have a question on that kind of line of topic there with the pilot, and I appreciate you throwing that in there. It's more of a legal question, hopefully somebody can knows the answer to, but being that the utilities is essentially part of the city of Marion, why does the city of Marion get billed for wastewater or the, the runoff from essentially its own utility entity? Is that required by law? I'm just, just seems weird that we get billed a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for stormwater runoff from essentially like our own utilities. Just help me understand the legal side of that.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that all the cost is split by all the users, no matter who they are. So since the city, if you're talking about stormwater utility, the city has a lot of paved roads or parking lots, and so it's creating quite a bitter runoff. And so to share the costs with all the other users of the utility, you don't look at who they are, and you don't give a discount, and actually, uh, entities have been written up by the State Board of Accounts for doing such. So that is something that is, is given that each utility serves all of the customers, no matter if it's owned by the parent company of the city of Marion.
So you're saying it's illegal to not charge your own city?
I, I'm not an attorney, but I'm, I, I say that I have looked this up recently, because another utility and city council were considering the same idea, and I located quite a bit, State Board of Accounts audits where utilities were basically written up and had a bad finding in their audit because they weren't charging the city for the services that was provided by the utility.
Okay, I just know we have vacant lots the city owns that, from my understanding, we're getting charged, and all that water just goes into the grass and the soil, but we're paying for water that's just going back into mother nature. So I'm just trying to understand, so we talked about the pilot, we're paying a hundred and seventy thousand, I think, approximately for that, a year. And so that would be maybe one reason I'd be in support of the pilot, just to get our money back for, from our own utility department. So I just wanted to get clarity, you know, can we just eliminate that? So we can avoid a pilot, trying to figure out options to, to not have to do a pilot, that's all.
Is there, I mean, is there additional in the presentation that we should touch on? Since we kind of stopped you at the breakdown of the six million and really caught into you on that?
Well, I, I actually, I do want to clarify now that I'm looking at my notes. I think I misspoke that your salaries and wages were going up three million. I think your salaries and wages are going to two million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's seven hundred and forty-two with the differential between twenty twenty-two finances and our future year. So I made a mistake there by adding that, but I will still get you that data, but it's not three million dollars. That's what I, that's what I had written down in, in some quick notes, two point two six, yes. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Correct.
That's for a calendar.
That is for a twelve-month time period, yes.
With your salary increases and.
I believe.
Cost of living.
I believe that is the number after that, yes.
Are the salary increases automatic?
The cost of living decision was made by the board to be automatic January first. Merit increases are not automatic, they're also capped. And so there's only so many that you can receive before there is a cap on that.
What's your cap?
It's eight steps, so it would take a person eight years to reach a cap in a particular job. And I, I can tell you that our lowest paid employees that are full-time, honestly, we're, we're struggling to stay ahead of, of fast food restaurants. So the wages are, are not exorbitant in that regard at all. We felt it important that a job like working for the utilities would stay ahead of, uh, nothing against McDonald's.
Sure, sure.
Or Wendy's or any of those places, but that we could stay, uh, ahead of, of some of the fast food places.
Could you get me a number on how many are on your insurance plan?
I can do that.
I know you said that there's eighty-seven employees with the water department, but I'm really curious on, to see how many are on your insurance plan.
I actually have that written down from the last meeting, because I was curious about that too.
Okay.
And they did list the numbers. Um, there is. There's fourteen that are on the, the lower plan, and then there's approximately fifty-three that are on the, um, the PPO. So they've got a PPO that's got a two thousand dollar deductible with a six thousand family. And the monthly premium roughly is about twelve, almost thirteen hundred a month for their insurance. That's before what the utility covers versus what the employee does their amount. And then there's, there's a high deductible plan, which is a sixty-two hundred dollar deductible, twelve thousand four hundred for the family. And that's running, um, looks like on average about twenty to twenty-two hundred a month.
Is that for the whole water department or just?
That's for the whole utility.
The whole utility.
So.
Employees pay fifteen percent of that, which means that the cost of living increases not maintaining with the insurance increases.
Because I'm showing that for the family, the difference this year is gonna be an additional forty dollars a pay increase. So yeah, I wrote all that down because I was curious to see how heavy the insurance was, and that's what it started. Doing my mind of, do we need to start combining numbers and, and getting better rates for everybody? Because that, as someone who has to pay for family insurance, that's a rough, a rough amount to be paying.
Sure.
So. So I kind of feel like that number is, you're probably, if you would look at that a little closer, I bet that's more benefits than salaries, based on what I'm seeing from some of the salary stuff. I'm not seeing huge numbers in wages going up, I'm seeing it in the benefit side.
And just, I, I will give you the breakdown of the numbers I was giving, but in the report, if you want to look at adjustment six on page eleven. So what I listed there is the, all the salaries and wages as by department of the water utility. I show pro forma of one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine, less the test year of one million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, five eighty-nine. So the total increase in salaries and wages and, in the, between the two time periods is about fifty thousand dollars. So to your point, you're, a lot of that, and I was talking about a two point two million dollars, one point seven million of that is the actual salaries and wages, and the rest of it is what I had accumulated in some other kind of benefits, either a perf or FICA or health insurance, I'm not sure. I'm going to have to pull that number together for you, but if you wanted to just look at salaries and wages, it's shown there on adjustment six.
And the perf has not gone up, from what I understand. Do your employees pay the three percent required amount?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and the perf numbers have not changed. Voluntary contributions are what they are, but n- nothing that the utility and, and the mandatory stuff has changed.
Correct. And would you mind if you're, as you're pulling numbers, could you pull the history of your chemicals the last couple of years and just show what the bid amount was and what you actually spent? And we could see that year over year too. And I'd be curious to see that with your contractual services as well, year over year. I'm sure that's in your accounting, and you just have to hit the reports.
Yes, we can pull that, yes.
Okay. Other questions that you guys have, or you want them to push forward on the slides? A couple slides to see what other questions come up?
I don't have any, I'll keep moving the slides, but if we could wrap up in twenty minutes, so we can, I need to switch between meetings, that's all.
What we're showing here is your debt service funding. Originally, I talked about how in our previous case, we had requested for a couple of bond issues, and we had estimated your total debt to be at nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. You can see here, it's at six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars is where it levels out after you've funded the debt service reserve. So that's where I was saying that there's some savings from the last case to this case of between nine hundred and thirty-two thousand and this, uh, decrease of two hundred and fifty thousand down to six hundred and seventy-three thousand. But we're not able to capitalize, uh, use that, use that amount to offset any of the operating increases because of our agreement that was made in the last rate case. So overall, this shows the revenue requirements, that in blue is the operating expenses. And then we also have here the taxes other than income taxes, your funding of the debt service reserve, you're paying back of the loan, you're building up the, the operating fund balance, so that your, overall, your revenue requirements is eight million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand. After accelerating your revenues, you have six million, five hundred and seventy thousand. So that's a deficit of one point six million, which is talking about the twenty-four point nine eight percent rate increase needed. This is just showing how the rates were enacted. Back to your question of when phase one went into effect, that's the first column, October of twenty twenty-three. You have the phase two of January twenty twenty-five, phase three is going into effect here in January first, twenty twenty-six. And then we had phase four and phase five following two years. And so the accelerated and incremental phase amount of the increase is that your metered rates per month will be five dollars and fifty cents per hundred cubic feet. There's a monthly customer charge of seven dollars and forty-five cents. And your monthly fire protection charge for a five-eighths inch and three-fourths inch connection is five dollars and ten cents. So what that, yes.
Monthly customer charge.
Yes.
That's just flat minimum, just to have the service, is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Why would we need to increase that, um, if we're gonna increase the rate?
Right, so we're doing it across the board, rate increase your last time. You had StanTech come in and do a cost of service study and created these cost allocations to each of these items. So we need to increase everything across the board by the same percentage, since we're not doing a cost of service study. So it's not just the water, that water flow that's been, that went up. It's also the allocated cost of how they did the cost of service study into that line item. So whatever went into creating that charge. So whatever went into creating that charge, those cost items also went up. So we just across the board increase everything.
I might point out though, that that's actually a benefit to our customers to have changed, to most of our residential customers to have changed the rate structure from the previous agreement, simply because, um, at that time, prior to 2023, the more water you use, the cheaper that it got. And the folks who were using the minimum amount, let's say one cubic foot, they were being charged a minimum of three cubic feet because that was what the minimum charged. So now the minimum charge is based on the, the monthly customer charge, that flat rate, but then their actual usage. So if someone only uses that one unit, they're only going to get charged for that one unit. Most of our customers use three to four, uh, our residential customers, that is. And so the, the bulk of the increase is actually going to rest a little heavier on the industrial customers. Because prior to this, um, they had been highly favored for their, because the water got cheaper, the more that they used.
So prior to 2023, were there, was there not a base monthly customer charge? You just got charged a minimum three units?
I'd have to go back, but I, I thought it was a, it was a smaller charge. It was a, I believe it was just a, well, sorry, I'd, I'd have to go back and look. That might have just been a minimum charge plus your fire protection at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So the next page shows a typical monthly bill analysis. And as Robyn said, most of your customers are using between three and four units. So we're talking about their current charge right now for a four-unit user is $23.40. In 2026, it's going up by a dollar 30. And what we're proposing after this rate increase, it would increase by just under $10 at 983. And then if you would, I sent you another item, the rate survey. So we create a rate survey of all the communities that are, uh, 25,000 population or, or greater. And there's 39 communities. So if you go down a little bit, you'll see that Marion is currently at 27 out of 39 with their 2026 rate. And what we're proposing is that you'd be moving up to, at, at 18. So about in the middle, you'd land right in the middle. So I want to point out also those top communities, those are all served by Indiana American and they all have the same rate. So Indiana American charges everyone the exact same rate.
So that goes back to the question, Mr. Klein, that you asked if, if they're, you know, what, what are our options? And if, if we were to have to come to the point of a sale, which, um, for a number of reasons, I would not be in favor of, but not the least of which is that would be the new rate, uh, instantaneously. They've not approached me. I'm not, I'm, I'm not aware of, of anyone else. I'm not aware that they've approached us.
And I would also just note, all the communities that have a two next to them, they have phasing in of their rate increases as well. And so those are all needing to be updated for their 2026 rate. So your, where you would land is probably a little bit lower than what's being shown there.
How are these other cities towards the bottom maintaining at such a low rate? If chemicals and salaries are going up, I mean, South Bend, I know they probably have more users, but they have more employees. They surely have a higher cost of living. So how, how are they maintaining? Do you have customers like Marion that are having the same problems with us, as us?
There has, I mean, there is a lot of rate cases going on. I actually live in Plainfield, which is at the lowest. And I just received something in the mail today that my rates are going up. And they hadn't had a rate increase since 2009. I'm going to be looking into that. But I do know Lafayette has a water rate case pending right now at the I U R C. Columbus has phased in their rate increases, so they are also going to be seeing an increase. You see that two right next to it. I should put a two next to Fort Wayne, they just filed a rate case. So you, you aren't alone in filing rate cases. There's a lot of rate cases going on at this moment.
What happens if we agree to send this to be reviewed by the state? And they agree that we should increase it and we choose not to? Does that cause issues down the road?
Well, I guess my assumption is that if it's approved to go forward for the request, that it kind of stands that it would be approved once they've processed it. Because as that not to exceed number, um, the return visit would be more of a true up. This is what they said. But, but with the approval happening, yes, we're going to do it. We just need to wait and see what that final number is.
So I guess my question is, if it goes to the I U R C and they come back and say that, uh, you can only raise it 25%, are you going to be insolvent? Because you told me that you're possibly going to run out of cash if you don't get this rate increase.
What, what it does is that you, you get a certain revenue requirement. And so there might be changes because we'll settle with them that they don't believe the salaries and wages or they come back with a different number for salaries and wages. And so we'll settle likely at a number just, just below, we would hope. So no, I'm not insulted if, if they come back and say, no, it's 23%. They're just, they get very much more precise with the way that they calculate it. But then, and also that, it, it limits you to, that's when Robyn and her team will manage the money. They will build up their operating funds. They might have to delay or decide when they're going to do capital items based on when they'll actually have the funds come in.
Okay, and does, does your board recommend this? I mean, I haven't heard anything from what the board says or what the board recommended or what the board approved or, I mean, is, are they favorable on this or?
Yes, in order for us to approach the council, the board had to pass a resolution that agreed upon these same numbers that you're being presented with now. The vote was unanimous to, to go forward with this.
Okay, as we're trying to wrap this up, any last questions or information that we want them to come back to us with?
Okay. Can I ask one question? For the sake of the city council meeting coming up, would you like us to go back through this entire report again? Okay.
And could you, when we do that, could you just have the numbers more precise on the salary? Now I'm, not only maybe, I'm not confused, now I just have different information, but then now I don't trust the information. So I don't know, like, I don't know what to trust to what I'm hearing now. So if you could get some hard numbers, present some hard facts. Because I just, I want to trust with the information that's given to me. Does that make sense? For the meeting, that'd be great.
What you just said was pretty much a good paraphrase of the road I note myself that sounds like we simply want more information and that, I, well, for me personally, I'm not in a real comfortable position making a hard and fast decision right now with what we've heard. Not that there's smoke and mirrors, I just, I don't know. That's my thought, maybe I'm missing something. But you kind of paraphrased it well.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, we will go ahead and close the meeting out.
Did you guys want to?
I know, I was.
Send it back with any? Or you can always do no recommendation. I mean, do you want to send it back to the council tonight? Technically, it's a committee, it's going to come back.
I would move, my motion would be that we send it to the council with no recommendation. That's, I mean, that's not a thumbs up, it's not a thumbs down. It's simply no recommendation because we just don't know what we want to know yet.
Any feedback on that, Eric? It's what it sounds like.
Yes, it was.
You need to turn your mic on too, Eric.
Yeah, question was out of motion, we answered. I, what's the timeframe on, I mean, by, when do we have to have this all decided by?
It would be our hope that we could present this to the I U R C before the close of the year in order to avoid that penalty of having a rate reduction because of the debt service management situation that we mentioned earlier.
I'll add on that too. I mean, it's, it's, you can send this back to council for the meeting tonight. And at the meeting tonight, you can send it back to committee, just so you know, in case if you wanted more time.
And my feeling is if we, I mean, we want it to come back because we've got a public hearing and that may give us some additional feedback from the public. And somebody may say something none of us have thought about.
I'll second the motion then.
Okay.
But I guess a question I would have is the, the process of you going to the I R C, are they not going to ask you much the same questions that we're asking you? And you, don't you have to defend it in much the same way or is it a different process?
Yes, we do. We end up writing prefiled testimony and submitting our report. We spent all the backup to them. They go through, the office of the utility consumer counselor will go through it in very much detail, just as you guys are asking for. And then they'll actually make a site visit, will give them a lot of information. So it'll be over, uh, uh, that's why the time period takes a while, is that we go through the process with them. They explore all the numbers in the general ledger and scrub through all the information as well.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second, so all in favor?
All right.
Aye, okay. So we'll send that back to council without a recommendation. We are expecting additional information on those reports that we asked for. And then can you forward this to all of us as well, this presentation, please? And then we'll have the public hearing tonight and decide from there if it, we need to do further research. Okay, thank you for all attending.
Thank you so much. See you guys in a minute.